All right. Welcome, everybody, to our March 4th budget workshop number one. May I please have a motion to call the workshop to order? So move Dave second. Linda, all in favor? Aye. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody. We apologize for the 20-minute late start, but full disclosure, we were able to test out the new voting systems that the entire county will be using for the budget vote this year. So it gave us a chance to kind of play around with that now and a little bit after the meeting. But we're going to welcome Mr. Freeman to our first budget workshop of the season.
Thank you. All righty. First budget workshop, happy to be here. Our agenda for this evening, I know we've liked to do a little state aid learning during every workshop, so we're going to get into data today, you know, and really try to make sense of the governor's state aid run a little bit and those numbers. So I want to add some context to that with a data dive. Hopefully, it's not overly stimulating. We're going to get into the weeds a little bit. I'll forewarn you now on how this data impacts Webster when it comes to state aid and the foundation aid formula. And then we'll review the operational budget, go over the benefits budget, and, you know, leave time for questions, but, you know, it's a workshop, very conversational. Please, as we go along, stop me. Let's have a conversation about everything. So, without further ado, let's jump right into foundation aid. So there's a timeframe to foundation aid throughout the year. And so when we're looking at projecting for '25-'26, there's several dates that have already passed that are kind of benchmarks that we were looking at. So in November, the first rollout of what we're projected for '25-'26 comes out, and we're at a little over $47 million for foundation aid. Next date benchmark is the January Governor's Proposal. And you see, I highlighted that in yellow. It is more than what the November projection was. So by $524,195. And if you remember, it's a 2%. The Governor's Proposal was for us, 2% floor over last year. And then February, actually, right around Valentine's Day, it came out the Monday after, we get a February database estimate. Actually, our number went down even more since November. So we took even a little bit more of a loss. So I updated, so now what's the Governor's 2% look like against the formula? Goes up to $615,000 more. And then there's actually a couple other dates. In May, after the vote, there's another database release, and then we get another one in the fall. So it's an ongoing cycle. I just wanted to show you that timeframe. But what does this all mean in a sense? What's driving it? What's behind it? Try to, you know, peel back the curtain on a very complicated New York State system. So, ready to dive in? So first, what changed on those numbers? Really, the only change is why we lost money was the Consumer Price Index changed. Went from 3.1 in November to 2.95, was finalized in February. So what does that mean? We are now in the hold harmless group. We're one of the districts in the state where the formula does not produce as much as it did last year, so we are in the hold harmless. And so let's look how we got there with our data dive. Going to go at five, five parts.
And Brian, just to add.
Be open for questions as we go.
Fifty-four percent of the districts in New York State are at that 2% floor.
Yep. And about half of Monroe County. About half of Monroe County is hovering right at 2% right now for their increase. We have a couple outliers. There's about five districts that are significant outliers that got increases, but rest of us are right around there. So we got five main parts. We're going to start with enrollment, okay? Complicated enrollment. So we have two lines. Blue is regular enrollment, and I went all the way back to 2007, 2008, when the foundation aid formula first came into existence. And then we have, the red line is called total wealth pupil units. Have a little definition up there for you, but I'm gonna just point out this term weighted in the formula. Weighted publicly placed students with disabilities and adable pupils weighted for secondary school. Those play significantly into enrollment. So if you have a drop at the secondary level, it hurts more because those students are weighted in the formula. So, and secondary is 712. I know we have a 68, and 6 is still elementary school in consideration, so as for a frame of reference. So that's the glossary definition that the state uses for what is a total wealth pupil unit. And I'll break that down a little bit more. So here's our enrollment going back. And you could see, highlighted a couple points where we've seen some inflection. So our high on the enrollment was really around '08-'09, '09-'10 when it comes to the foundation aid formula. That's on a delay, so it's really probably two years before. And you see that spike in the total wealth pupil units as well. So that's telling me, when I look at the data, that we had a spike on the secondary side because I know, looking at the data, it wasn't from students with disabilities because we stayed relatively flat back then with our classification rates. So those were our high watermarks, and you could see we've trended downward with a couple ups here, little downwards there. So I pointed out two spots in 1819 where you see slight decline, but then a precipitous drop on the total weighted pupil units. The first one up is the religious exemption. So the total weighted pupil units went down at a faster rate than the overall enrollment. So there's the first whammy because we lost a few more secondary kids to that. It's that process. The kids were already here, not kids that were coming in. So there's one. And then taking a look at COVID, we had two sharp declines as well, and you can see those kind of go hand in hand with their reduction. So enrollment went down, the total wealth pupil units also went down. Now, recently, you can see the trend is different with the last couple of years and what's estimated for next couple of years. Enrollment is going down, but the total wealth pupil units is going up. Our classification rate has increased since COVID. Those students are weighted differently in the formula, hence the total wealth pupil units is going up. Still significantly lower than where it was in the beginning of the formula, but projecting out, it's going to go up a little bit because of that classification rate. Does it make sense?
What was the religious exemption, so?
So religious exemption is when that was removed for vaccinations. You can no longer claim a religious exemption for immunizations in schools.
So they had to vaccinate or not go?
Correct.
Or not come to post school.
Yep.
So, good, thank you for that clarification. So part one is the enrollment story into the formula. All right. Next up is the wealth factors. And I kind of stacked them, even though it kind of looks misleading, to show you the total scale of what's happening here. The wealth factors that are benchmarked are the assessed value of a school district and the adjusted gross income of the district. Okay? So gross income is just what gets reported on all of our tax returns, all of us that live in the district, what we, to the IRS and New York State Tax and Finance. They know, they drill us down for the data and send it off to the district. Here's your amount, and that gets allocated to you. Same thing with assessed value. So overall, those two combined are just shy of, right now, $10 billion. So just to talk about '07-'08, our income was $1.35 billion, and it's grown to $2.79 billion over the life of the formula. Assessed value started at $3.26 billion, and it's now at $6.33 billion. So when you add those two together, you're just, you know, a little shy of the $10 million overall. But those are our two tracks for wealth when it comes to the formula. Questions on that?
Is the, is the, it's kind of going to step pattern, the assessed value, is that every time it goes up, it's when it gets assessed again? Is that the?
What you're seeing there is the steps on the equalization drop.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yep. It's kind of gone uniformly over those last few years there.
All right, because it's year to year.
Yeah.
And the formula kind of looks at two years together, right?
Correct.
It's one of the other.
It's one of the other. It's the lower of the two averages.
Right, and we'll get to that, okay.
So we got enrollment, and we got the wealth factors. And let's put them together in probably the most complicated slide of the evening with these four lines, and I'll break it down. So these wealth factors are allocated to the pupil counts. This is where it gets a little complicated. So the gold is the state averages for the total assessed value and total income for everybody in the state. Take all the kids enrolled and the entire state's assessed value and the entire state's income. That's where we get our averages from, year over year. The blue is us for our assessed value in relation to those total wealth pupil units. Okay? So you see, we kind of trend. I'll point out, you know, you see early on, here's the Great Recession. You see, there's a little housing decrease overall for the state, but you know what? We actually didn't see that because that was a downstate phenomenon. But that goes to show you, what happens downstate impacts the numbers for everybody because that's a decrease in the state average, and it didn't impact up here. It was a downstate thing. So just, you know, really nuanced data that impacts all of us. So that is...
How, how does it impact?
Because it changes the average. So for us in that area would draw us either up or down in comparison to the overall average. It pulls us or pushes us based on how that average goes year over year. And on the very last slide, I'll put it all together, and you'll see how we compare. Red and the yellow at the bottom is the adjusted gross income. So that's how much income is per student allocated. And you can see, we trend actually fairly close to the state average with that line. Couple blips here and there, but we're relatively on par on the state average. It's the assessed value where we are farther apart. These are the two things that they take to make the average to say, okay, this is how much money we think Webster Central School District can pay. This is how much money we think the state needs to pay inside of the formula. These are your two benchmarks, and it's all on wealth pupils and these numbers. All right, nobody's heads exploded yet, so that's good.
Yeah, we don't get it enough to tell it exploded.
So those two things form what we call a combined wealth ratio. Assessed value, income, put them together, we get this combined wealth ratio. Okay? So here's our history of combined wealth ratio. Okay? One is the average in New York State. So if a district gets a one or anywhere by a one, you're average. If you're above it, you're above average. If you're below it, you're below average. So as you could see, our history with the combined wealth ratio, we are below average. But for our area, it's actually really not below average. It's, in comparison, are slightly better than a lot of suburban districts in upstate New York. There's outliers. The formula isn't perfect, but there is outliers. There's districts that have very high, 60% free and reduced, a higher CWR than us because they have so much commercial property. So that pulls their formula closer to that overall state average because they're very commercial. Rush Henrietta is a perfect example of that. A much higher free and reduced rate than us, but a much higher, excuse me, assessed value comparison because of commercial properties. In Buffalo area, example I use all the time is Chictawaga. Very high free and reduced, but it's largely industrial area with commercial properties, drags their assessed value closer to the average, so it skews their wealth because of that. So there, there's outliers throughout, but I pointed out our two highest years, actually 2018-19, we were right at .9, and projected for next year, '25-'26, we're going to be right, you know, within one decimal point of another .9. So why do I point those out? Why does one mean more than the other? And we'll get into that on this next slide here. And it's all about the foundation aid. So went back to '07-'08, highlighting those CWR high points with our foundation aid received and the foundation aid due. So 1819, our wealth was right on par with what's coming for next year, but it didn't matter because it wasn't taken into account because we were underfunded. We weren't year over year comparing red to red. We were blue to blue. And it was artificially manipulated by the governor at the time. As you could see since the beginning, red is what the formula would spit out for us. Blue is what we actually received. So in 1819, hey, we were just as wealthy. How come it doesn't make sense what happened? Because the formula was getting overridden. We were not operating on a fully functioned formula. So '25-'26, you can kind of see that blue is slightly higher now because of those numbers I showed you than the red because we are overfunded for the first time in '25-'26. Now that CWR, that combined wealth ratio, those wealth factors, really playing into the formula and what it's spitting out, combined with So even in 1819, we were over 95, and we're down a couple hundred in the formula, estimated So those are the data points that put us into that scenario of hold harmless and why now, all of a sudden, we had all these years of we were due tons of money because we never got the money for our highest enrollment numbers. We were at our highest. We never got that. And so...
If the, if the logic comes out that foundation aid is going to be 3%, that would be the, that would be the low, right?
Right, that would be our new hold harmless number.
That would be our new, okay, they won't change it.
Correct. Unless somehow, I mean, right now, the governor has adopted a couple of the economic changes based on the Rockefeller Report, so mostly around the free and reduced and updating census data. Unless in the next 30 days, they make some, heart, some really structural changes that could tip it, that'd be like, oh, now we're at, you know, we're above, we're at 3.2 because maybe they changed the Consumer Price Index number, or maybe they weight things slightly different. That's all, you know, open for debate right now, but we, you know, until that changes, we're, we're in the hold harmless.
Can you, I'm sorry, hold harmless means that they were going to fund us at what we're supposed to get?
Hold harmless means we're now overfunded. The governor's minimum increase is more than what the formula would give us, so we're being held harmless. They're not taking it away from us. So we're not, if you go back to...
So all those other years, they did take it away from us?
No, they just didn't give it to us in those prior years. So if you think about it this way, if the governor was like, all right, I'm not doing 2%, this is what she proposed last year. We're just letting it run. We'd be at 47007485, which is less than what we got this, it's less than what she's proposing. Because it's less than what she's proposing, we fall into the hold harmless.
So we'll get the two, the 4762?
Correct. Right now, is the way it's set up, we're here and not here.
Which all three of those numbers are more than last year. One's at 1.5-ish, something like that, and then the floor is two. We did learn this weekend that there are districts in New York State that their number is actually a negative number. Like they, they are not even due to get what they got last year. Hence the concept of hold harmless, that you're going to very, at the very least, get what you got last year. And then she added another component when she did her executive budget to say, hold harmless plus 2%.
Okay.
Right. We're, '25-'26 for us is the, where we're crossing the threshold. Will be the first year where what they propose is more than what the formula drives for us. The formula is more than '24-'25. If I wasn't clear with that, I apologize. It is more than we're getting now for foundation aid, but it's not enough to surpass the minimum increase that the governor has proposed. And that's where the hold harmless comes into it.
And so as a district, what Linda's question was, whatever they determine is that floor, and we're hoping that we're going to hear from the House and the Assembly that they will propose a 4% or 5% floor, and then they'll connect with the governor and determine what's that number. Maybe it'll be 3, maybe it'll be 3.5, minimum for everyone. That'll end up being our new number.
And that number will be better?
Yeah, I think, you know...
I mean, because it just seems everything is so fluid.
I believe there is a quote later on in the slides that I was going to defer to Mr. Neenan for, that we heard yesterday while in Albany, but if you want to bring it out now, you want to...
I can read it, but...
Yeah.
It just seems like even when you tell us something, it can, it's always not sure.
Yeah, the next 30 days of these budget negotiations, it's, it's wild. Like you, you know, that's why I, you know, spend most of my time watching what comes out of the Albany press corps, or the people that are there, like what they're putting out every day. The Albany Times Union, read that every day to see what's new and what's coming and what's being proposed. Because it does, like, it could be as simple as some, you know, assembly person from, you know, the tip of Long Island says, ah, I want to throw this bill, and here it comes, and now, maybe it sneaks in, sneaks through and has some kind of impact on education.
So my thing is, a person that lives in the community, not just a board member, I don't think anybody understands how hard it is to do a budget when you're just trying, trying to build it on what might be, what will be, what, you know, all of those things.
Yeah.
I never understood it before I came to these meetings.
Last year was the closest to, you know, well, I'll say the old way of New York State budgets because the previous governor was always proud of on-time April 1, we all knew our stuff. Because, I mean, regardless of what happens in Albany, you know, our budget vote is locked in stone. It's not changing. We can't say, oh, well, there isn't a budget yet in Albany, let's kick it to July. We're not allowed to do that. And that is historically what would happen is, you know, school districts in the 90s and early 2000s would be like, I think this is what we're going to get, let's vote on it, and then maybe the state would pass their budget July, August, and then make some changes before they set the tax levy based on the better information. Because you, you can adjust that after the fact, but that was the norm back then. But last year, I don't, if you remember, we actually, I put a projection out, this is what I think we would get foundation aid, but the budget didn't pass till early May, and we were locked in, and I was off by, I think, $290,000 because they went back to a different CPI number in the final budget than what was predicted when we had to adopt our budget legally. So in that two weeks of when we were legally required to adopt our budget, and then when the state actually passed theirs, they made that change, but it was too late for us to adjust to.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Great question.
So for a conservative estimate, are you using the 2% because the likelihood of it going below 2% is, no, there's no chance?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Or could it? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, we'll, we'll talk more about like what we think is happening in Albany, but, you know, if that's the governor's first round salvo, they're not going south of that. It would be extremely unlikely for that to get rolled back from that 2%. It's like the, that's the starting, you know, poker hand of just what we're tossing into the negotiations right now.
But we are in interesting times. So, I mean, you can never be sure of anything, really, and that's why, but it, I mean, conservatively, we're trying to go with two, yeah.
So, yeah, it's not, you know, it's not an easy formula to digest. It's, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to it, and so hopefully that gives a little bit more context of the main parts of what drives that for us.
So should we, as a district, be advocating for a complete overhaul instead of, of the foundation aid formula? The Rockefeller seems to just have changed a few things, but it seems to me that it's not made it what they adopted, right?
It's a very interesting point because the foundation aid formula collapsed 18 different funding streams into one. And almost seems the way to go now is to break it back apart with separate funding streams for separate things. One being with students with disabilities having a separate funding stream. Mental health services having its own kind of calculation versus the basic, you know, reading, writing, math, your foundation aid, that, you know, you want to offer three foreign languages, here's your foundation amount, you know? You want to add an extra section to first grade, it's foundation aid. So parsing out perhaps different funding formulas might be the best way to go, and it really would probably be the best way to answer the mandates that come from New York State. Here's a new law, here's the separate funding stream that goes with it.
Right.
You know, a safety and security, you know, requirement is to do the plans every year, have the public hearing, comment period, all the plan, you know, the work that we have to do with the state on that. So maybe there's a funding stream for that area. Like I said, you know, the mental health, students with disabilities, you know, sky's the limit. I mean, they already do it with transportation aid, you know, and other things, BOSIs. So there's kind of that thought process already there, and maybe the advocacy is to expand upon that for those different areas. Because then that would be very district-specific of what's, you know, you're getting more money for what's important to kind of your community, I guess. But those are, would be my initial thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions. All right. On to budget now. Now, everybody's warmed up? Do we need a breather?
No, just go.
All right. So our first preliminary budget look is our central services for this year. And what are central services? This is all of our business, HR, communications, the superintendent's office. The largest part of this budget is our BOSIs admin. We are still the largest district in Monroe One BOSIs, so because of that, we pay 20% of BOSIs administrative costs, get doled out to us. So that is a huge part of our central budget, so you'll see that. Overall, a couple things moving on in here on our central service. Like I said, BOSIs is the largest part of our central budget, so it's all of our required BOSIs administrative costs. And for reference, we, in April, that is always presented to all the districts. Comes from the district superintendent, to Heather, and to myself, and to Brian. We get that, and it has their administrative costs for the year. And then also on the BOSI side, two of our largest operating software costs are here with all of our frontline services, and our Wincap, which is financial and HR packages, are here as a cost. You'll see our liability in student accident insurance is high, 12.5% increase. We're seeing some significant costs there. And I think the easiest way to sum that up is we are in a very litigious environment in New York State, and we're starting to see those, those costs translate. You know, the Child Victims Act claims are industry-wide issue. Yeah, some districts have those more than others, but, you know, insurance, insurance is a kind of a shared issue. issue when you're talking and you're buying into insurance. So, we're seeing that just naturally increase everybody's claims because you never know when another one might pop up. And then our student accident claims are also going up as well. We're seeing, you know, any student injuries for PE or athletics. We're seeing our rates there also come up. But I think that's also because of the litigious environment in New York State as well. So, when we're up for renewal on those, we're seeing significantly higher year-over-year increases. And when we talk transportation in a couple of slides, we all have lived it personally. What did our car insurance do this year? We're all paying for the increase in issues throughout the state. So, also here as well. Supplies and contractuals, we try to reduce in this area as much as possible across all areas. And reduced a lot of our contractuals as well. Those things that are services, you know, our auditors, our tax bill printing, anything that we could really say, you know, we don't need this. Some memberships, some training, PD, some printing services. But one of the things is we're locked in for our audits, and that is a set contractual schedule based on the RFP. And so, those increases are going up, much like everything else. You know, we used to have eight auditing firms respond to an RFP. We're down to three, and so the prices go up with that, and it's a requirement. So, you know, a year-over-year $15,000 increase in auditing services wipes out what savings we're getting in other areas. So you'll see that as well. And then salaries, non-instructional are the largest part of this. We're trying to keep pace with minimum wage increases and market demands as we've had turnover, you know, with some of our offers. And then you'll see a little higher with the movement of a certified staff member due to promotion on the instructional side too, that we're catching up on.
Can I ask a quick question back to that slide?
Yeah.
You talked about the student injuries. Is it because we have more injuries, or it's just because people are suing more?
No, we offer a supplementary insurance, but what we're seeing is we're picking up greater costs because more families are, it's no longer on copay insurance. So, we're covering more of the deductibles, and so I think that is a statewide phenomenon.
So it's really a healthcare cost increase that's now being translated to this, yeah?
Yes, so.
That makes sense.
That's good.
Yes. Any questions? So here's our line item, you see the supplies going down, the contractuals, slight increase, you know, most of that is offset. But that insurance is the 12.5%, that's, you know, year-over-year, that's a large part of our budget, our liability insurance. And then our BOSI services, those programs, and our share of the BOSIs admin is going to, probably about 1.36%. So, $27,000 for next year. So, overall, it's a 4%, but you can see the overwhelming cost there is the insurance cost for us. All right. Buildings and grounds, 25, 26 preliminary budget. You know, I was going to, this is like the creative part of the budget here, when we're looking at things. Right now, we have about 10 openings in our buildings and grounds, and that includes cleaners, custodians. We're minimally staffed at buildings and grounds, we could probably use a few more grounds workers. But we're doing it. But on the cleaning side, you know, we've seen, we have significant openings. So not much to kind of pull back on there when we're understaffed. So, looking at creative ways we can use our facilities budget. So, presenting a couple, an idea for you tonight, like I said, our staffing. So, taking a look through the budget process with Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Flood. You know, a couple of years ago, we really pushed the work order system of people putting in things and using that for our budget requests. And it told us a story and came up with this idea. We can better utilize our facilities budget to drive more aid. So we're trying to make us more state aid with our facilities budget by doing this. Reducing our repair and building project contractual lines by half a million dollars. Take that half a million dollars, transfer it to the capital line under debt service, which you'll see later. These mini capital projects will drive an extra $350,000 in building aid. So, we looked at what was being requested from our 11 buildings in our departments, and we're like, we could better utilize this money. These are some nice-to-haves, they're not essential that we were doing on the facility side. They're great, they made people happy, not going to, you know.
Like what example?
Yeah.
New coat hangers, new, you know, cabinetry at elementary schools, some new furniture. You know, Mr. Cunningham was, you know, he added what the requests were, he tried to honor them. Some little things around the building, signage, supporting, turning over, painting some different areas, things like that. On your building walks, probably one of the, you know, if you don't, Clem North utilized some of their building budget, but they also use facilities, a lot of painting, a lot of things that pop, a lot of aesthetics. I guess is probably the best way to say it is aesthetic things throughout the district, you know, yeah.
They look, they look good.
Great.
Oh, yeah.
It's when we do our visits, I'm thinking, they're cool. I'm impressed because I've been in the buildings.
We don't necessarily have to stop all of it. We're just going to do it through a capital project and now make it aidable.
How do you do that? Like, would you say all of, paint everything at one time and bulk it together? Is that what you're, what you're thinking?
So, yes, so, you know, I'll use the example that we're going to have, like at Trader. You know, the facilities budget can only do so much because it's spread out amongst 11. So it's kind of like zeroing it. So, we've had requests to redo the lighting system and the sound system at the Trader Gymnasium. So, maybe we pick off a little at a time as part of the facility budget, because we got to put a little over here, and we got to do a little over here, and we kind of spread the budget out about what is the priorities. With, you know, health and safety being one, program, and then aesthetics. So, take the $500,000, do all the lights and sound at once. Get it all done. Upgrade the electrical panels, and it's done, boom. Now this is built in, so, okay, what are we going to do next year? Thomas needs it. Boom, $500,000 to Thomas for the fieldhouse and for their gymnasium. Revamp that. Bang for your buck type of things that are also like, ooh, we're going to notice this when we walk in for an event. And then work our way doing this by better utilizing our dollars.
Because now you're going to create a revenue source with the aid.
Correct.
Thank you.
Rather than just spend it on these vendors to do stuff for us, do it as part of the capital project process to increase our aid. It won't be next year because it's still part of that lag process. We got to get it voted on May, submit it, get it done. But it, we're, you know, it's not next year, but maybe two years from now, we'll start this. But we're starting it now in preparation for down the line. Anytime we can drive more aid for the district, heading into uncertain economic times is what I was trying to do.
Smart, which?
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
So, yeah, y'all, you'll see in the, keeping pace with the changes in minimum wage, our buildings and grounds contract is very contingent on that. So as minimum wage changes, everybody's wages also go up accordingly. BOSIs is trending higher than normal. We do use BOSIs for our buildings and grounds department. All of our facilities management systems are now networked. So HVAC, lighting, cameras, security, the visitor management system, all the things that traditionally have been in the facilities budget are through BOSIs in combination with the technology department. One of the more unique things on the buildings and grounds budget too is the equipment. We try to reduce equipment so far in some of our budget lines that we have. But we always go back to this contingent budget, and we talk about it at the budget here, what's a contingent expense? Usually, equipment is the first thing to go if a budget goes down, we'll just wipe out equipment. But you don't wipe out all of it. You keep the equipment that is necessary for health, safety, and continuation of operations. So, what do we buy out of our buildings and grounds equipment lines? Well, if we don't have plows that work, we're not opening school. Say that's a pretty necessary health and safety and continuation of operations. You know, if the mowers break, you know, things like that. So, we're going to keep that equipment line untouched because of that. But then in the supplies area, we are reducing our supply budget, our capital project work. When we looked at it, has allowed us to reduce that, and I'll point those areas out. So here's where we're reducing our contractuals that we're not going to buy directly, and our repair projects that we've done in-house, we are moving those. So I pointed out those two lines. Then you see the supply line going down as well. Trying to hold steady on our fuel costs, natural gas, and our electric costs. Now you see the salary increase. But I'm pointing, these are the reductions that you'll see pop up in the debt service area. Just wanted to highlight those. So, taking money from here, put it in a different part of the budget, drive that aid for us later on. So just about, it turns out, you know, it wipes out the increase on the non-instructional side. So, pretty much a flat budget for them because of this. But really, the salary increases.
So with the, you mentioned earlier that you had a full, positions that were not filled?
Yeah.
So if, if they were filled, that would be a bit bigger number in terms of the, or are you including those in there?
They're included.
Okay.
In there in the hope that we will do. We fill them with a lot of subs and retirees, so by the end of the year, we do get it. We also fill it with a lot of overtime. Especially in June and around the major sports seasons. You know, winter, we run a lot of overtime. This year especially with the plowing we've had to do on the, on the off hours and the off, on the weekends for, you know, events. In a two-week window when we had a couple of plays and a lot of basketball going on, we spent about $50,000 in buildings and grounds overtime because they were just working almost around the clock to keep the parking lots clear.
And Wonder Care runs over break.
Yep.
So same thing, you got to.
We've isolated them to one building to make it a little easier. But yeah, we had a couple, we were running three individuals to clear Clem South over February break every day as well. But we were trying to be resourceful and thoughtful. We asked, who's showing up to your buildings? Because if we could wait till nine o'clock, I could use the same three guys. I don't have to call in more people because they can get over to your building a touch later.
And that was the first time I think we've done that. And that is something that again, we're all very, very cognizant and conscientious of every dollar we're spending right now. So, that was, kudos again to Blaine and to Brian and to Neil.
Right. And, you know, a smaller reduction in supply in comparatives to the last budget, because we don't want to run out of toilet paper. So we want to keep those supplies, buildings and grounds, paper towels, that they're paying for all that. You know, the standard Kleenex boxes, which aren't great, but they supply a lot of those things. So, you know, so we're keeping that budget there too, because that's, those are health and safety items. So, here's the two projects. We're still doing the $100,000 capital outlay projects too, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle. But, so at Trader, this is what we were looking to do, replacing the electrical panels to help with some of the systems over there. The gymnasium lighting and all the auxiliary spaces, upgrade two HVAC units on the roof as well. So, energy savings with improvement in the viewing environment. This was a, you know, what we came up with this concept, it was, this was the first thing on everybody's head, but, oh, this has got to be done first, if we were going to try to get our most bang for our buck. The $100,000 capital outlay project, we're going to Plank North. We're doing the LED lights in that cafeteria, plus their elevator lift in the cafeteria, replacing that as well. Trying to get ahead on that. Questions on those? So, yeah, real excited about this to drive a little extra revenue, and, you know, I do, I love our capital projects. I like changing things. And the way I looked at this, this is no budget increase, we don't have to add a half a million dollars. And over the next 10 years, it's another $5 million worth of work that we could look at and do. One of the things into the future you might see in these projects also too is water remediation. The lead testing rules are changing. So you see more bottle fillers and things popping up, but we're probably going to have to do some infrastructure work as well around those areas because the requirements have gotten a little bit more stringent as well. All right, transportation, our preliminary budget there. So, salaries, always looking every year, driver shortage. Wish I had the 55 extra drivers I had when I first started 10 years ago, given the budget presentations. That is how many we are down. So, every year, we take a look, it goes down, and so we're right sizing our budget based on that. We have a hopeful number that's still, you know, 10 more drivers, they're in the budget, come on, let's hire them.
10, but then you probably lose five.
Yeah, yeah. Hoping to get 10, lose five, maybe hire seven. That's, you know, it's.
Still a huge problem?
Oh, yeah.
It just doesn't stop, right?
Doesn't.
I know, I always hope it's gone.
It's such a unique job for, even if you're thinking in retirement of something to do, yep, you know, I want to do it because of the hours.
Yeah.
You know, it's early morning, but then you're back in the afternoon, breaks up the day. Whereas, you know, if somebody wants a part-time job, they, I'll go work eight to 12 someplace. Do something that's consistent versus breaking it up. How many hours do you want to work? Maybe I want more than the minimum 25 that we offer. There are opportunities, but that's cyclical based on sports and field trips. So it's such a unique kind of position to recruit and attract to in that part-time world per se, with some pretty stringent rules and requirements around doing it. So with the trainings and the license and the physicals, so.
Don't people, like, don't administrators and other people end up driving the buses sometimes?
We usually empty the garage and the office.
Garage people, I know there's somebody besides.
Yep. We have a couple of administrators that are in the process right now of getting their license.
Just to fill in when it starts.
Just to be able to give us the flexibility to help.
Nice, yeah. And they're okay, they're happy about that?
They volunteered.
Oh, good.
They did, they volunteered.
Yeah.
Because even though the populations, pupil population might go down, they still have to get around to all the neighborhoods, right?
Yeah.
So that's not going to change.
Yep.
I mean, I just never believe, can't believe how complex it is. I, I'm telling you, this is my third year, and I'm like, I'm just, it's just sinking in. So, kudos to, to this presentation and helping us understand it.
Thank you.
Well, and to your point, I think they're constantly training. Anytime we're over there, if you look in the training room, there's always people.
Yeah, I, if you've probably have noticed, we moved the buses with the sign and made permanent signs in front of every building about hiring. So we've made that adjustment. Because, you know, the buses were always mobile, maybe we won't need them, we can drive them away. But we've made the signs permanent for recruiting them, so.
Have you guys seen, we got the new software for the buses, and I, I remember that it was going to help the, figure out the routes and all that. Has that made an impact on the need and savings in fuel or anything?
So they're, they're working with it to plan for next year right now. And Renee, kudos to her and her staff for, you know, thinking outside the box to try to, you know, solve this problem continuously and coming up with ideas and using that software to help them.
That's great.
So, yeah, then contract transportation, you know, BOSIs is doing fewer runs for us as well. We contract with them, so you'll see. We contract with them, so you'll see a reduction there. We also do a bid every three years to see what third parties. Ontario Bus, First Student, those groups, if you think about it that way. We put it out, say, hey, give us your best price in case you have capacity. They have limited capacity, so we're not going to spend what we budget there as well. So reduction there as well. On the contractual side, we're seeing two large increases. Increase in our radio tower rental costs. So we're beholden on that one, the price is what the price is. And we need to have those radio towers accessed. So increase there. And then our auto insurance premiums increasing greatly, like we all have seen. It's the same story that we're seeing in our personal life happens here. You know, poor experience rating, a combination with market factors too. So it's, you know, one-two punch there. And then supplies, no reduction in our supply lines. All of those are necessary for the continuity of operations. Don't want to cut there because it would just hurt us down the road. Wouldn't be able to offer, you know, as we got down in the year, field trips would suffer, things like that. So we want to not do that. Because we'd probably have to take more buses off the road if we weren't able to support and supply the maintenance to them. So by the numbers, you could see, you know, our instructional salaries, little to no growth there despite a very generous year-over-year increase in the contract. My friend, Mr. Swinson, I hope would agree with me on that one. Our insurance costs, you see there that, you know, almost 40% increase on our fleet.
You see it as a percentage.
Yep.
Yeah.
Fuel staying even. The contractuals, we did have the reduction there. That is our private contract, not the BOSI's one that I talked about, our third-party contract. We've reduced there, that helped offset the radio tower cost. So that radio tower increase was greater than 3.24%, but it's being brought down because of the reduction in the third-party contract. We're just spending less, the budget goes up less because of that. So small reduction overall year-to-year. You know, with the largest being almost a 6% reduction in BOSI's contract of what they can do for us. And then debt service coming up. Putting the buildings and grounds and the buses together to form our debt service budget. Because our bus borrowing, you'll see, is slightly reduced from last year. Remember, we purchased fewer buses to right-size our fleet. Now we're going back up this year to go with flexibility. And then our capital borrowing, we have three projects on the books officially. Our 2014 project, which was roofs. 2016 project, which we're sitting in. And then the 2018 project votes are all what makes part of our capital debt. So those three projects are what we're paying down. No borrowing for the 2023 project as we have not had any significant expenditures yet. So that is not on the books as part of this budget yet. And then you'll see the transfers, the $600,000 transfer to capital, the $100,000 project, plus the new $500,000 project. And then year after year, we always transfer to the federal fund, just shy of $250,000. This is our local portion of the summer programs for students with disabilities. The state picks up the rest of the bill. So we're generally budgeted around, our share is $240,000, give or take a little every year. So there's the top part is our construction debt. Interest slight decrease there. And now that the 2018 project is completely done, see the increase in principal there. So slight increase in our construction debt. But I will point out, when we looked at state aid, if you remember, we have an increase coming in building aid. So those go hand-in-hand, more building aid because we have more debt. So that is offset by the building aid increase. We try to match those things together when we line up our borrowing. And then the principal, the bus going down by about $90,000 for that. So our total debt service is just up $669,505. And then I highlighted the transfer to capital, last year, 2425, only the $100,000 project. Now both of them in 2526. So, and our total transfers there for you as well. Next up is our community education preliminary budget. Very simple, all cost-driven by minimum wage. Paying above that to compete with our competitors. We're fighting for the kids, is the fun way to say this. Trying to keep up, get our, keep our lifeguards. We had a wonderfully large event this weekend at the pool. I don't know if anybody got a chance to saw that. But once again, got a couple kudos from outside community members, which is a point of pride. So we're trying to maintain all those projects that we have there. So very few full-time employees in this budget. Only five full-time employees as a part of this budget. The rest, it's all made up of part-timers. So some other budget items, we reduced where practical. We have more part-time staff that is doing stuff for us. So we've reduced our contractual instructors, those outsiders that we don't pay through payroll, that we just have kind of an agreement with, hey, you're going to come in and do water aerobics for us. We actually have people that are doing that on payroll. So we've reduced that. Supply lines reduced on non-essential items, you know, skipping buying lifeguard uniforms, things like that, taking a look at that. You know, 95% of our supplies are pool chemicals anyways. So, you know, our equipment line is not reduced here. You know, if something breaks, then the whole pool goes down. You know, lose a pump, we don't want it to turn green, we want to get that fixed. That'd be a shame. And so we look at those as a health and safety item as well. Because also, it's a PE station. The Webster Aquatic Center is not known as the Webster Aquatic Center in New York State's eyes. It is the Webster Schrader Pool. We call it the Webster Aquatic Center, but it is the Webster Schrader Pool. It's like Thomas has their own pool.
Is that a change? Did I miss that?
That's how.
In the eyes of the state.
In the eyes of the New York State, yeah. We hop in the time machine. It was built on our campus because we can make it stay aidable. It was built when Schrader, before Schrader, it was put in before Schrader split. So they had the highest student population. So every 500 kids, you get one PE teaching station for facilities planning state aid. The Schrader Gym is so large, it counts as two. That's why everybody wants to host sectionals here. So it's a large gym. So there's two. They have the auxiliary gym and fitness, there's three. They could build a fourth, which is a pool, because they had over 2,000 kids. Which made it aidable. So you got eligible, that huge facility was eligible for facilities planning building aid. That's why it's called the Webster Schrader Pool. But to us, it's the Webster Aquatic Center.
If we tried to do it today, we couldn't.
Tried to do it today.
Because we don't have this population.
Fax in the sheets, the facilities planning, and wait to get my love note from them saying. Is he having a stroke? So, yeah, that would not work today.
Okay, I just missed that one.
No, it was, you know, one of those, honestly, I don't remember if it was advertised that way back then.
It was like a whole-town community thing?
It helps with the, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
So there's our budget for community education. You know, the salaries going up 8.5%. Just trying to stay competitive. No change in equipment, small reduction in our supply budget, about 4%. And then our contractuals as well, taking a look at that, reducing that by $10,000, a little over 13%. All right, benefits. Large part of the budget. Look at that preliminary budget. So break down the areas, our pensions, you know, salaries drive those rates. TRS is flat, ERS is up. But increases in both areas, because even when TRS is flat, salaries go up. Our costs go up there too, just not as much. ERS, it's a twofer, the rate's up, plus salaries are up, which equals a larger bill. Healthcare, we've talked about a little bit back in December. We went into a little bit detail there, we'll go in a little bit more. Those RASH II plans up 14-4. Projecting double-digit increases for next January as well, talk a little bit more about that. RASH I, the retiree plans, stabilizing for next January with no impending Medicare changes coming down. HRA contributions down, HSA contributions up as well on the healthcare side. You'll see some other benefits items, workers' comp. We actually had a year-over-year decrease, so a savings there. A small percentage increase in our dental rates and our life insurance plans. Buyouts has also increased because we've added, we added more staff over the past couple of years. So we've seen buyouts increase there. Also, younger, stay on parents' insurance till 26. So more of the younger generation eligible for that buyout earlier. And then retirement benefits guaranteed can no longer be budgeted by breakage, but offset by your salary. So every bargaining unit now has a retirement benefit. And so it's, we're going to, we're locking it in. And whereas before, it wasn't a guarantee, they had a window. And so we could live off of year after year, their replacement breakage. We can't do that anymore. That is costing us significantly. So you'll see that as a new budget line item. But it gets offset by, in the current fiscal year, reducing down to who their replacement would be, so. So just to visualize what our TRS bill and what the rate has looked at, I would like to show this. So the rate for next year is going to be less than the average going back to 1978. You can see the roller coaster ride for TRS. Our bill is projected to be a little over $8.5 million for TRS. So with the small rate reduction, but salaries going up for everybody, it does increase it a little bit. Hard to capture there too is like some of the extras. How much are we really going to spend on tutoring? Like all that drives our TRS salaries as well. So some of the, you know, I know here's person A, I know how much they're making, here's their salary. But the extras kind of add into that pot as well that we do throughout the school year.
So if a person is also a tutor, they, your salaries.
So, yeah, if we have any teacher or teaching assistant, anybody that is in the TRS system, they're doing anything extra after hours, even supervision, that all goes to their final average salary. It goes to what we report, and we have to pay for that as part of the retirement as well.
So there's a contribution from the district of almost nine, more than 9.5% per dollar?
Yeah, we send 8.5, that's what we're projected, about $8.5 million to the TRS system. It's the district's share of the pension costs. Slightly more complicated than that because we also get, like, give us a little factor for our retirees that are in the system still, you know, so. ERS is even more complicated. So TRS is, or slightly different than ERS. Usually, they work hand-in-hand, but the last couple of years, they've kind of gone away from each other a little bit. And so ERS is well above their average of 10.11%. It's climbed pretty steadily over the last few years. Large increase expected for next year, going to 16.5%. So double whammies here, a large rate increase, plus ERS is, think of everybody else. All those part-timers, they can go into ERS. All of our aides, all of our operational people, they're all part of the employee retirement system. So as minimum wage has gone up, this rate has gone up, so has our bill. Because it's dependent on salaries.
So part-timers are also?
Yep, they have the option to join the system. We encourage them to, because you'd never know what's going to happen. Yeah, we, you know, we always share a story. We have an employee, 16 years old, worked for us. Hated painting, walked off after two hours. Never even thought about it, you know, 15 years later is working at a school. It's the difference between tier four and tier six.
Yes, yeah.
As a 16-year-old, you don't think about it. It's a quarter of a million-dollar decision. Because.
Because he spent that time.
Never enrolled in the system.
Part of the vested.
He can go back to that? What's your?
So the.
He was in the system early enough.
You stay there.
So the system did not let them go back to that date, but they let them buy the two hours back.
Yes, yeah.
So we always, when we do some new teacher orientations, things like that, or the NEOs for people that are coming through, especially a lot of the kids, we tell the, a lot of the part-timers, like, you never know what's going to happen. Get into the system.
System, absolutely.
Because 20 years from now, you could have four career changes. And, you know, education might be something that interests you. Get in now because you never know what's going to happen. You know, there's stories about when it went from tier four to tier five, you know, on that, that, over that Christmas break, people running to be substitutes and things like that to get in before that happened.
Before the change, before the transition.
So those are our estimated bills on the pension system. So healthcare budget, I have linked as part of this, it's on the website, our December where we got and broke down the Medicare issues and some of the RASH II issues too that we were seeing. So I don't want, I don't want to bore everybody by going over that again. But we are expecting increases on our, into the future. No changes for Medicare, which was the big problem this year. But that Inflation Reduction Act will impact us for years. And I'll just, you know, kind of point out, on the retiree side, you know, now that it's, Medicare changed the plans. The Aetna plan has fundamentally changed. That was the whole, all the retiree plans fundamentally are new plans. They're not the same plan as they were the year before because of that Inflation Reduction Act. When you got rid of the donut hole, that changed everybody's plan nationwide. So it kind of reset. So what's going to happen over the next couple of years? We are locked in, we're, you know, as part of our agreement, we had a three-year cost lockdown with that. So that's up at the end of 2026. What's going to happen right now is RASH I, we go back out and do an RFP. Costs are going to go up because this Inflation Reduction Act, they're just start to get the real cost now throughout this year of what that meant to the plans. Because like we had said, who's paying more? It's the plan sponsors, not the manufacturers, not the government. And not the member, it's the plan sponsors. So now they're going to reset the pricing structure. So in three, if we go out for an RFP, you know, Exelus, Aetna, everybody that comes to the table, the numbers will be astronomically compared to what we saw when we did this the last time. That's going to be the lasting impact of the Inflation Reduction Act. We're going to see some significant increases. Aetna product might be still the cheapest, but it's going to be a lot higher than it is now. Because everybody is adjusting to it. So all that is coming down the pipe that we're kind of looking for. So on the active employee side, this is the hardest thing to budget for. We're January 1 to December 31 fiscal year. You know, we have to, you know, make educated estimates of what will happen on that second half of the school year. And what's going to happen next January 1. Plus, we have a large enough population of retirees and active employees of almost 3,000 people that we process hundreds of changes a year. You know, if we get even 20 people that move between plans, that significantly impacts the cost structure and share. So we have a lot of those swings in too. So a 14.4% increase, it's not flat for us because there's so many moving parts within that. You know, we could possibly, you know, just, it's not working out that way. But if we had 100 people decide to change from value to the deductible plan, that's a lesser plan, lesser, you know, cost share. Maybe that 14-4 becomes, you know, 13, 12. Those are the nuances every year as we budget because we have such a large population. You know, we have hundreds of changes a year. So that movement alone creates a lot of budgetary uncertainty that we do our best to plan for. So in the next two fiscal years are definitely going to present some budget challenges. They're not expected to come down from the mid-teens. I know the budget we've put together is probably wrong. I can't bring myself to put. I can't bring myself to put down a 15% projected increase, because all it's going to mean is close a significantly larger budget gap, because of the healthcare costs. So, plan is to just reduce expenses next year. Maybe tighten our belts even more as we get into the fiscal year, because we have a pretty good feeling that it's not going to be 9, 10% when it comes next January. That it's going to be even above the 14-4, where everything is trending right now. And I know they've given the superintendents the heads-up and the HR table the heads-up on that one as well. So, actually have our meetings next week to talk about it further, as a county. So, yeah, that's, you know, that's where we're at right now. And I just wanted to show, you know, how healthcare has changed since the start of RASH II, where we're at, and what the year-over-year rate increases are. You can see some lower, some spikes, really all depending on claims. So, this is Webster-specific too. This isn't always what RASH did. This is what Webster had to adjust to. This is our year-over-year increases. Just wanted to visualize that. And then, I always like to visualize the hidden benefits cost that nobody ever thinks of. Should turn this into a trivia question. What is the second-largest part of our benefits budget? Anybody?
It makes me think of the Friends episode though, when Rachel gets her first paycheck and she's like, "Who's FICA? The kids do it all the time. What, what?
Yes.
I don't know that person.
So, yes, FICA, that person is the second-largest part. We pay more in payroll taxes for Social Security and Medicare on behalf of our employees than we do for the pension system. That's how large of a budget that has now become. Because that's everybody. You know, we get people to say, "No, I don't want to join a retirement system," so, we don't pay for them. But, we pay for everybody when it comes to FICA. Even if they earn a penny, their government gets their 7.65%. So, I always like, I wanted to visualize, visually show that one as part of the whole package, because I think that gets lost, and that's a huge cost for us as we plan. So, here's our overall numbers. You know, that's, you know, it's one, it's the largest year-over-year increase in the 10 years I've been here, especially on the healthcare side that you see there. So, a couple smaller reductions, but overall, we're seeing that FICA increase, because a lot of that's driven by minimum wage too.
And the buyouts are folks who do not-
Pick up insurance.
And you provide them-
All the bargaining units have different amounts. We incentivize them to not take healthcare. But, unfortunately, you know, with the way the law is written, we've just given free money to anybody under 26 that we hire, because they can stay on their parents'.
But, it's cheaper than putting them on.
Oh, yeah, no, they love it. I get, you know, the age of 26, the parents cheer, because, "Oh, this is in my buyout." Yep, so, that's, you know, with that, with that change. So, yeah, this was the big issue that we knew coming in, that we, the healthcare alone is going to be an issue and create some budgetary stress, and so.
Can I ask a quick question? In the contracts that we have with our unions, is there a set rate for the employee contribution?
Yes.
So, that can't change, even if it goes up, it has to stay exactly the same?
It's a percentage.
Oh, it's a percentage of the total?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're, they would see an increase as well?
They would, yes, yeah.
Right.
They might be, there might be a 90-10 percentage change, or an 80-20, or we have a multitude of them amongst the seven bargaining units, so.
But, if the cost is this, they have to pay a percentage of it?
They're paying that 10%, they're 10% of the increase. We would be 90%.
So, they will also see increases as well?
Yeah, they'll see it, yeah. You know, a 14-4 is noticeable enough for everybody to notice that change in January. So, total budget presented this evening is a little over $104 million. This is our first stop on the draft budget of all those areas added together for you tonight. And then, I just wanted to throw this slide in here, we did this last year. You know, some of us were in Albany yesterday to try to get some, tease out some information. You know, foundation aid, will we get more than 2%? You know, 3% gets us another $168,000 in aid, 4% is about 600. So, you know, what's the magic number? Everybody was pretty tight-lipped. So, will we get an on-time budget? My prediction, probably not on-time this year. I think we're going long. That's, you know, more of a tea-leavereading prediction. Some other items, the push for universal free meals seems to be heading in a positive direction. It seems like that's going to go over the goal line, to use the analogy. It seems like everybody was on board with that. The EV bus mandate, question came out, who owns it? Is it the transportation side of New York State or the education side of New York State? So, saw some little back and forth there, if, who's really, shall we say, driving the bus on that one? There seem to be, legislators seem poised to push back. One of the conversations we had on the cell phone ban, seems like they're going to push back on that, especially downstate. The meeting we had with one of the downstate assembly staffs, said they were, they were looking like they're going to push back on her carte blanche cell phone ban. It needs to be more nuanced. So, something there. The one-house budgets come out next week for greater detail. But, I thought the most interesting thing is that my takeaway, and Linda and Brian that were there as well, I feel like this year of the 10 years I've been going there, like I said, that I've been voluntold to go, seems like the focus was light on education topics. It was like pulling teeth to talk education. It was a different feel and a different vibe that like, and I even brought out some topics from like, way back. You guys going to increase the capital outlay from 100,000 to, you know, it's been, it's almost gone to 250 a couple times. It's almost, but it's been ripped out at the last time, and the, you know. Oh, you know, I haven't seen that yet. Very tight-lipped, very, we couldn't get a lot, and that was very, very unusual. So, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say the only thing on the cell phone we did hear a little bit, that they're trying to give is much local control from the concept of bell, to bell of what that means. And I think that there's been a lot of testimony in regards to the districts that they're highlighting, that have been successful already in some of this work. It's really been because they were able to do it with local voice, you know, from parents and from kids and from staff, to say, "How are we going to manage that?" And I'm, we're hopeful that they're going to give us some leeway to be able to do that. And that's, that's what we're advocating for. And so, if you hear any other conversations, that's usually what they mean by local control. It's a lot of that nuance in there, so. Dave and Aaron, I don't know, is there anything else?
With the universal free meals, if that goes forward, is that funded by the feds? Or is it going to be funded by the states or local?
By the state. So, we get our federal funding from the US Department of Agriculture, not the US Department of Education.
Right. So, it'll be like a match or something?
Yeah, I don't-
Yeah, what we heard was that this year they will fund it, they believe. But, it's interesting, because we don't know what, they don't know what next year would bring.
It is the one area I have not heard the feds tearing apart yet, so.
True.
So, more to come. But, we had nobody in our interactions that was saying that they were going to pull it, at least going into these next three, four weeks of negotiations, you know, in the House and Senate, with the governor. We'll see.
So, yeah, that's the best update we have right now, and obviously, as we go through this fluid process, we're going to be flexible with what comes out of Albany.
Agile.
Agile, agile was the term for us to be agile.
The term was that we need to make sure that we are agile.
Don't know what that means.
Well, I don't think we had, we didn't have, actually have it in.
Yeah, I did put the-
But, the quote was that we all need to be agile, so.
I didn't want to put it on the slide, because I wanted Brian to deliver it.
Oh, I did. Agile, huh? Doesn't make me like it anymore.
I feel fragile.
Usually, when they want to use a fun word, it just makes me not want to use it.
So, next couple of dates, Workshop II is on the 18th, Workshop III on the 8th. Budget adoption is April 22nd, and our budget hearing is May 13th, just as reminders. And as a shameless plug-
Oh, I like it, the link.
There's also our everything, plus the dates of everything we're doing, all of our links and all the documents. So, this presentation will go live tomorrow. We'll upload it here too as well. So, a lot of useful information there.
Thank you.
Questions, anything?
That's just really great.
I just had somebody ask me how, if I could explain why the healthcare went up. And I really could, I was like, I know there's an explanation, but I couldn't quite.
Which one? The retiree one or active?
Retiree one and all of it. Like, how did that happen?
Here's the link.
They're expecting prescription drug coverage, it was something about that to go down, but we're paying for it, I guess.
Here is the impact of the Inflation Reduction Act review. So, this was the most significant change since Part D was introduced in 2005. It was a huge benefit to the retiree, huge benefit improvement of all the plans. But, it came with significant premium increase. And those two bullets right here, shift manufacturer subsidies to future price negotiations. So, what was a direct rebate that lowered the cost of premium is not there. And then, it shifted the federal subsidies to the plan. The feds were paying less. And then, I think the best way I put this in here, this is the comparison of '24 to '25. If you add up the colors, you can see who wins and who loses. If you want to look at it that way, or who pays less, who pays more. So, on the left side was '24, the purple is the beneficiary. You're paying 150% of the four tiers. Now, it's gone down to 125, with the tiers going from four to three. So, less of a cost share in 2025. Now, the plan was paying in 2024, 75 plus 5, 80 plus 20, 100%. The plan is now paying 125% in 2025. So, there's one of the first major cost shifts. Now, the turquoise is the manufacturer. 2024 manufacturer rebates were 70%. Now, they're 30, with the hope for negotiations down the line. Significant cost difference there. And then, the government, 80% of the plan designed before, down to 60. So, the most now, in that, in essence, the thing that everybody, that cost the most was the donut hole. The donut hole doesn't exist anymore. That has a huge cost by removing that donut hole. It shifted the cost to the plans, which unfortunately is us. The feds didn't pick up the cost of the donut hole shift, we did.
And neither did the manufacturers.
Correct.
Which is what was the perception.
I think, that's what I thought, because I'm benefiting from it, right?
Yeah, I mean, and that's what we tried to relay to everybody, like, with this change, that it, it's a benefit for the people enrolled. You know, you're going to see the change, it's a huge benefit for the people enrolled. It's, the hit is on us.
Which, which-
Which is us.
Which is shared with the whole community.
Correct.
Between the manufacturer and us and the government, it would have been, I think-
I think it would have been more palpable if, you know-
I really benefit from it.
Some of those percentages were different. So, that is what the retiree-
It's just really just shifting costs, because even though you're going to pay, as a senior, you're going to pay less, but that shifting cost puts a burden on the town, which means a burden on the taxpayers.
It's a two-part, it's an improved plan. So, it's an improved benefit plan, plus a cost shift away from the member. So, it's a two-parter. So, that's the retiree. Why the active? What's coming home to roost a little bit too, is paying $10,000 a week to a visiting nurse. The point-of-sale providers are recouping their costs and charging. So, the COVID bonuses, all that that they were paying to nurses and to other support staff, of huge raises. That cost shift is into everything that we do, and all the claims, all plans. And then, we also have doubled our high-cost claimants that are on some experimental drugs that are very costly. And then, our increase in elective surgeries. We've seen those, that's what's driving the active cost increases. But, the cost of business, because of those employee costs that they were shelling out during COVID, they're trying to recoup those, so our costs are going up on the claim side.
Thank you.
All right there on our website. Another shameless plug.
Thank you. A lot of information, it's good, you want to, oh, yeah, yeah. I'm thankful that we get all that information, but also thankful it's broken down into three different workshops, because my brain is definitely fried, right, after all that, but thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
All right, with that, motion to adjourn the meeting. Carol, thank you, second. Maria, all in favor? Thank you, have a good night.